Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees. And so I want to welcome everyone. And I've done a head count. I believe all the trustees are present. If you're not here, let me know. So we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we're at Agenda Item 3, to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Do any of the trustees have anything they'd like changed in the order of items on the agenda? Seeing none. The agenda is approved? Right? I don't -- yeah. Okay. Next, we'll approve the minutes from the previous board meeting, beginning on page four of your packet. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? Grace?
Thanks. I wasn't here, so I -- it's a little weird to be trying to make an addition, but maybe it's just a question. It's one of the public comments, and there says something about strongly opposed to late board schedule, and I'm guessing that's just the bell schedule. But it appears a couple of times, the board schedule, so I just want to make sure that we are -- if we're including that, that it's right.
Okay, so you're saying it shouldn't say "board schedule," it should say "bell schedule"?
I'm assuming. I wasn't present, but I'm guessing that's probably what it's meant to be.
Okay, we'll verify that with the office, right, Jacey? Okay. Any other comments, additions, or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Trustee Wake, second by Trustee Havens. Any board discussion? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. Item 5, we have public comment and correspondence. We have public comment regarding non-agenda items. We have written correspondence beginning on page 12 of your packet. So at this time, we'll take public comment regarding non-agenda items. The rules are three minutes per speaker. You need to come forward, identify yourself, write your name on the list, and spell it out loud for us. You can't identify other persons or infringe on anyone else's right to privacy. So please, is there any public comment? Go ahead.
I'm R.A. K.A. F.E. And I'm a resigned noontime aide. And I've been dealing with this problem for a while, and I've left messages for various school board members, superintendents, head of nutrition, and HR. So 40% of food ends up in the garbage in, right now, Missoula County public schools. It's not composted, it's not recycled. I am paying for composting for two schools. And the kids are in the lower-income schools. They are allowed to take back their fruit, their snacks, their juices, their cheese sticks that they've been handed to them. In one particular school, they are not allowed to take them back, even though it's their food. I've been fighting about that. I've been in touch with the OPI, the USDA, the PTA, the Missoula County Health Department, and there should be shared tables in every single one of the schools. In some of the schools here in Missoula, you can walk into the lobby, and there is refrigerators, and it says they can go ahead and take food if they need it. There's boxes of food. I have researched and taken photographs of the garbage throughout Missoula County public schools, and it appears to me that the higher-income schools have the higher amount of waste, have the higher amount of food that is thrown out, and not recycled, not composted. I feel that there should be -- also, you guys have hired a zero-waste strategist that's going into, I think, four schools right now. But I feel like they should be in all the schools. You -- also, Missoula County is a zero-by-50. This is what's going on in this city, and I feel like they've got a long way to go when it comes to that. I have expressed concern over the food waste, the food loss. There's actually a USDA Food and Loss Waste Prevention Department out of DC. So I have spoke to the head of that food service. Also, there's amazing, amazing amounts of plastic silverware that cannot be recycled, not be composted. I have taken it upon myself to take the plastic silverware and wash it, and bleach it, and dry it, and take it to the poverello. I've taken up to 5,000 pieces of this since November. I have now been told that I can't do that anymore, and I've told that the kids cannot take back their milk, or their fruits, or their vegetables from their trays. And I just think that's really wrong, and I think something needs to be done about that. So.
Thank you very much.
And I think I did it in less than three minutes.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? So go ahead and state your name and give us the spelling.
Hi there, I'm Katie Cutz, K-A-T-I-E-K-U-T-Z. I just wanted to come and make sure that the board is aware of this handout that was passed out at Sentinel High School. I kind of assume that you are, but I'm not sure because the transparency is not that great. First of all, it's really great to see everyone's faces. I volunteer in the schools at Paxton multiple times a week, and the kids have been so just happy since masks came off. So anyways, thank you for that and for following that CDC guidance. I feel a little bit hypocritical reading this paper because there are children in the room, so I just want to let you parents know there's some pretty disgusting wording. I don't know if you want to have the kids step out. If we can give them, I don't know. I just feel like it would be hypocritical of me to read this to you guys and not give the parents warning, so anyways. Okay.
We do have access to that. We could read it ourselves.
I want to make sure that it ends up in the public comment as well, so I'm going to read some of this, if that's okay. Have you guys -- I don't think everyone in this room knows what I'm talking about, so maybe.
Okay, just, I don't know what to do, so I guess you're on your own.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to give the parents a heads up, as I would appreciate that same respect. Questions? This was a ninth-grade health class, or a ninth-grade class of some sort. I don't know who the teacher was. I don't know anything about the teacher, and I'm fine to keep it that way, but these are 14-year-old kids. So, define heterosexuality. How can you tell if someone is heterosexual, straight in parentheses? What causes heterosexuality? Is it possible that heterosexuality stems from neurotic fear of others of the same gender? The media seems to portray straights as preoccupied with sexual intercourse. Do you think so? Do you think straights flaunt their sexuality? If so, why? Who assumes the dominant role and who assumes the passive role in a straight relationship? The fact that that is being talked about to 14- and 15-year-olds just absolutely blows my mind. Who assumes -- oh, wait. 40% of married couples get divorced. Why is it so difficult for straights to stay in long-term relationships? Considering the consequences of overpopulation, could the human race survive if everyone were heterosexual? 99% of reported rapists are heterosexual. Why are straights so sexually aggressive? The majority of child molesters are heterosexuals. Do you consider it safe to expose children to heterosexual teachers, scout leaders, and coaches? Are you offended when a straight person of the other gender comes on to you? When did you choose your sexual orientation? How easy would it be for you if you wanted to change your sexual orientation starting right now? What have been your reactions to answering these questions? So I guess I just want to let everyone know in the board that parents know about this. I have a friend.
Okay, thanks. Your time. Thanks.
I was making -- I feel like part of that was making sure that.
Well, go ahead and wrap up quickly, then.
It's short. I don't have anything prepared. I just want to let you guys know that the parents know. One of my friends is a fishing guide in town, non-political, knows everyone in Missoula. He posted this on his Instagram yesterday. He got 65 comments back from all political sides that were just absolutely appalled. People about ready to pull their kids out of MCPS if this teacher is allowed to remain in the classroom.
Okay.
If he were to change heterosexual to homosexual, that teacher would have been gone in a day right away. So that's also disgusting. So I just want to let you guys know that the parents are aware that this is not okay to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Casey Ballou, K-A capital C, two small e's, B-A-L-L-O-U. Lovely to be back with you all. I'm the president of the Missoula Education Association, middle school teacher here in the district, and I just wanted to come up. Anytime a tough topic like that comes to public comment, we all know that the board members can't interact with public comment. I think that we do need to remind folks that there is a way and a method that exists for this -- issues like this to be dealt with. And that comes directly through those parents and those students who are in the teacher's classroom, to the teacher and to the principal. We know that teachers, you know, try their hardest to connect with students, to make materials relevant and engaging, and that we're humans, so we're not always perfect at doing that. But our job is to make sure that we ignite a joy of learning. So when these things come up, we just want to make sure people know, go straight to your teacher with concerns. We like to have that open policy, and make sure that you go to the principal as well. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, which is our Community Connection. And our Community Connection today is the Missoula Robotics Team, led by Brian Boot, Head Robotics Coach, and they will share their team's progress for the 2021-2022 school year.
All righty. Well, hello, everybody. My name is Tim Walters. I'm the team captain this year for our robotics team, MRT 3216, and this is my fifth year being involved with FIRST as a whole. Thank you all for inviting us to present to you today, and we'd like to start out by providing you with a copy of our business plan, our robot flyer, and showing you this year's robot reveal video. Each season, our. Each year, a team is tasked with building a competition robot from scratch in approximately six weeks. Our annual robot reveal documented the actual build part and the fabrication of that part of the season. And now I'd like to turn things over to Quinn.
Hi, my name's Quinn. I'm a sophomore at Hellgate High School, and I'm the business lead for the team this year. And this is also my sixth year participating in FIRST. I've been part of the Missoula Robotics Team for two years now, and I was part of FLL for four years before high school. The Missoula Robotics Team is part of FIRST, which stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, an international STEM organization that is headquartered in New Hampshire. We participate in FRC, which is the most technical and advanced level of FIRST competitions. Our team consists of approximately 25 MCPS high school students from all three high schools. We have two lead mentors, Brian Boot, Sentinel's Industrial Technology Leader, and Dan Landy, Sentinel's Computer Science and Engineering Teacher. And Mr. Boot is right over there. We also have mentors from the community who volunteer their time and lend their expertise to the team. We have three of those mentors with us today. And so FRC teams are actually technology companies, so we cover all aspects of a functioning business. In addition to working on the competition robot for each season, members also work on business management, marketing, and PR, and fundraising, as well as community service activities and outreach. Students gain valuable skills that they take with them after graduation to college or to the workforce. Additionally, MCPS recognizes the robotics team as a varsity activity, and students who meet team requirements for lettering receive a varsity letter each year. Now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Wesley.
Thanks, Quinn. My name is Wesley Sullivan. I'm the programming and electrical lead for the team. And I've been on this team for three years, since my sophomore year, and I've been a part of FIRST for five years. FIRST was founded by Dean Kamen and Woody Flowers in 1989 to get students interested in STEM and enable them to compete on teams with the important goal of bringing the competition, excitement, and team spirit of athletic activities to the world of STEM. Dean Kamen most notably invented the Segway, which you can see him pictured on here, as well as a home dialysis machine and modern soda machines. Woody Flowers was a professor of mechanical engineering at MIT. They intelligently saw that the only thing lacking in STEM was the competitive spirit of sports. There are three main FIRST competitions with a little bit of overlap. At the high school level, there is FRC, in which we compete. From concept to prototype to competition, we design, build, and program a large-scale robot each season. Beginning in middle school and also into high school, there is FTC. In FIRST Tech Challenge, teams design, build, and program a mid-sized robot from a kit of parts each season. And at the elementary and crossing into middle school level, there is FLL. FIRST LEGO League uses a LEGO robotics kit to build and program a small robot each season. Even though there are over 70 FLL teams in the state, with over 30 in Missoula alone, spread between private and public schools, including MCPS, we are the only FRC team in Montana. While all students benefit greatly from FIRST, it is the students who stay with FIRST through FRC who gain the most. One way to sum up FIRST is Dean Kamen's famous quote, "We are not using kids to build robots, we are using robots to build kids." With values such as gracious professionalism and co-operation, FIRST develops students into global STEM citizens. For the younger students, FIRST creates a foundational understanding of many STEM principles. However, it is the FRC students who benefit the most as they shape their life throughout their FIRST robotics competition careers. FRC has close to 4,000 teams, gaining about 300 teams each year, with close to 100,000 students competing globally, the most prominent countries are the United States, Canada, Turkey, China, and Israel. While we're the only FRC team in Montana, one of our many goals is to increase the reach of this program within our state. Back to you, Quinn.
Thanks, Wesley. The slide provides an overview of what our season looks like. You can see that our season actually extends all year, which is quite different from an athletic sports team. Each section of the season has a different focus and goals. So throughout the year, we learn a wide variety of skills that will help us in the future regardless of our plans after graduation. As Wesley mentioned, the importance of FRC in high school is preparing us with both the hard skills that we are learning, such as fabrication, electrical engineering, and computer programming. And this is where FRC is unique. We are also learning valuable soft skills, such as effective communication, collaboration, and time management. One of the most intensive parts of the year is the build season that starts at kickoff, where the game challenge is released. From there, we have approximately six weeks to design, build, and program our robot from competition. Additionally, all team members must participate in community service activities during the year and work with the business team on fundraising. As FIRST says, participating on a robotics team is more than robots. Now, Tim, we'll discuss our team structure.
In order to achieve our goals for each season, we have developed a structure consisting of multiple dedicated sub-teams led by their own student leads. New members are welcome to explore various areas of the team. This allows everyone to find a field that they are interested in and feel comfortable in, but they are also allowed to dabble in other areas if they're interested in all aspects of FIRST. This also allows greater communication and coordination between the teams, because as you can imagine, there's a lot that needs to happen between, say, the electrical team and the mechanical team to make sure everything works on the robot. Now back to Wesley to discuss our goals.
While much of our focus is on the current year each season, we are also planning for the future of FIRST in Montana. One major goal is to secure a permanent space for our team, which would allow us to create a robotics center not just for us, but for other FIRST teams in Missoula and across western Montana. With this space, we plan to host outreach events and encourage students and adults to get involved with FIRST programs. Some of our current ideas include providing summer STEM camps, FLL camps, and open house events to recruit new mentors and team members. We also plan to speak with our state legislature about expanding FIRST across Montana. We would like to follow the examples of other states like Idaho, Indiana, and Washington that offer generous amounts of funding for STEM education in FIRST programs. We would also like to be able to participate in more competitions during the season and ultimately qualify for the FIRST World Championship. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Riley to talk about this year's competition in Idaho.
Good evening. My name is Riley DeBae. I'm a freshman at Big Sky High School, and this is my fourth year being on the FIRST team. This year, we attended the FIRST Idaho Regional Competition. During this three-day event, in addition to the competition on the field, all teams are judged -- all teams for judged awards. The judges observe robot and system design, examine team structure, and interview team members to evaluate their eligibility for a myriad of different rewards. The next slide shows our achievements in these areas this year. We won two prestigious awards. The Woody Flowers Award is a lifetime award that celebrates a notable mentor within the FIRST community. We are pleased to announce that our own Alan Bronick, who has mentored on our team since its founding in 2008, won the award this year. Also, the enterpreneurship award recognizes a team which has developed a comprehensive business plan. In order to define, manage, and achieve the team's ongoing objectives, the summary business -- the summary business plan that you have is what was presented to the judges at the competition. We were honored to receive the award this year. Finally, but certainly not least, two of our team members, Tim and Quinn, were recognized as Dean's List semifinalists for their outstanding work on the team's high academic achievement and involvement in extracurricular activities outside the robotics team. And now for the robotics competition. We would now like to show you one of our 16 matches we completed at this competition. Each match is 2 minutes and 15 seconds long. The match starts with a short autonomous period and finishes with a tele-operated, driver-operated period. In this qualification match, we are on the Blue Alliance. Each alliance is made up of, maybe, made up of three robots, three blue, three red, on a 3v3 system. Once the driver takes over after the autonomous period, we continually shoot blue balls into the upper hub. Ah, there we go.
In three, two, one, go!
The hub is that main sort of cone-shaped structure you can see in the middle sometimes. We were tasked with shooting basketball-sized, they looked like overly large tennis balls, into that upper hub. We had to intake them from around the field, shoot them into that hub. We also had to compete with our teammates and against other teammates for the balls. Towards the end of the match.
Armack, two points for robot who clear it.
We have this called a climbing phase, where we're tasked with climbing up on a set of rungs. We were able to do that very efficiently and very quickly this year, which we were very proud of doing. It's a little bit hard to see because of the lighting, but our robot is on there somewhere. We were the -- one of the most consistent shooters there due to our shooting design, and we used what's called a limelight. It reflects green LEDs back into a camera off of vision tape around the cone structure that allows us to adjust the position of the shooter angle and the robot to very precisely and accurately shoot, which is a lot easier than having the driver have to manually adjust all those settings. It just handles it all in code, which is nice. There's also a defense aspect to it. You're allowed to push other robots around, get in the way, be a general nuisance, which we had a fairly heavy robot, and we had what was called swerve drive, which allows the robot to pivot and drive at really crazy angles. It makes maneuvering around other robots a lot easier. As you can see, there went past, but there's a jumble up of robots. There are also penalty points if you contact a robot for too long or if you damage another alliance's robot. So teams are pretty graciously professional, as we call it. We're just there to have fun. Teams are definitely competitive, but at the end of the day, we're going to feel really bad if we break somebody's robot, so we try not to do that. And if we do, oftentimes, teams will help that other team fix their robot, see what they can do to help with that. And I think we're good to jump past the video there. The playoffs are double-elimination rounds. We played two quarterfinal rounds, winning both and qualifying for semifinals, where we played two of them. We lost both of those matches and did not make it to the finals. We finished fourth place on our alliance with a record of 11 wins and five losses, finishing sixth overall out of 28 robots. All righty. Thank you all so much for your support and for inviting us here. Thank you for your time. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have the robot right here. His name is Hubert. We come up, we came up with that name through our voting system, and.
Just barely beat out 2001 Honda Civic.
It was between Hubert and 2001 Honda Civic.
Are there any trustee questions? Go ahead.
Are the teams that are there, I guess, what are they? Are they community teams? Are they direct high-school bonded-up teams? Where do they come from?
Most of the teams at an FRC level are high-school teams or like technical institute teams for like the high-school grade level. FLL teams, which is the FIRST LEGO League, those are often comprised of everywhere from clubs like Boy Scouts to family teams hosted in their basements to school teams. But once you get into things like this, it starts to cost a bit more money, so it's often funded by an organization like the school board, per se.
Any other questions? Nancy?
I was just curious about you. One of your goals is to find a space, is that right, where all the FIRST teams can work? What kind of a space is needed for you guys?
Mostly what we're looking for is a space where we can have like our tools, our equipment, but also have like a learning center, because currently we're hosted at Sentinel, but we're a little bit scattered all over the place. We have programming and electrical going on in Sentinel's STEM Center. We have our business, which is in Mr. Boot's room. We have our actual machines, our equipment, our drill presses, belt sanders, all of our tools, up in the mezzanine above the Small Engines Automotive Shop. And as you can imagine, when we're giving tours to new people, it seems kind of daunting. We're running all over the place trying to show them what's going on. So if we can have one solidified space, I think that'd really help our team expand a lot and expand STEM throughout this community.
And Grace, did you have a question?
Thanks. I loved hearing how long you all have been involved in the project, and just seriously, fantastic job. Congrats on how far you got and obviously the teamwork that you all are showing. I'm wondering, in wanting to get more kids involved, is it something that kids should really start when they're younger, or are there still opportunities to get involved with robotics if you're a high schooler who's just hearing about it when you arrive in MCPS, for example?
Yeah, so actually, this year, we had at least one sophomore join the team who had never been on a FIRST team before. So it is actually something that you can just jump right into and have lots of fun with. It is helpful to have experience, obviously, in FIRST when it comes to the competitions and whatnot, but overall, it is something that you can. and whatnot, but overall, it is something that you can just jump into. People can recommend you to do it, and you can join it your senior year if you want and do amazing things, so.
We had a senior join this year who had never been a part of FIRST, never heard of it. His buddy just told him to join. I think he said it was one of like the funnest times he's ever had in high school. We spent all, most of our preseason training all of our incoming members and existing members, making sure everybody's up to date with what's going on, everybody knows how to use the equipment, everybody's trained. We weren't able to do that a whole lot this year because we had to move out of Sentinel's music rooms up into the mezzanine above Mr. Boot's Small Engine Shop. You can imagine it took a lot of work. We have a lot of equipment that we had to move, a lot of organization had to happen, but we made it work out pretty well.
Any other trustee questions? Just you, Walker?
I was just wondering, how much time do you get to spend on this in a day? I'm asking that because of space. Do you actually all get together at one point, or how does that work?
So, we all get together. This year, our meeting times were Monday, Friday, and Saturday. Monday from four to seven, Fridays from four to nine, and Saturdays from 10 to four. And during that time, all team members, so like all 20 of us who were available to come that day showed up, and we were working on either the robot, working on business, working on programming. But also having like everybody spread out that kind of far makes coordination a bit more difficult, especially when you're running around trying to track down this person, ask them a question, but they could be anywhere five different places.
And trustee Elperson?
Thank you, Chair. I have a comment. I just want to thank you guys for your presentation, and I know you guys presented to the community back in March, and I know trustee Walker Andrews and I were able to attend that, and I think you guys are just doing outstanding work, and please let us know how we can support you guys.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your presentation. It was really enjoyable. Okay, our next agenda item is reports and announcements. It's an information item, and we'll have student trustee reports, and Dr. Watson will direct those.
Yes, I think we've got Annalise here today from Big Sky. Do you want to go first?
On May 5th, our counselors, social workers, and administrators are taking part in the More For Kids Kickball Event. Big Sky has raised $575 so far. More For Kids helps Big Sky students with gas cards, bikes, clothing, and other necessities. If you're interested in donating, please see the Big Sky Facebook. Spring is here and prom is just around the corner. Big Sky's junior/senior prom will be held at the barn on Mullen on May 7th. Prom will start at 7:00 PM and end at 10:00 PM. Tickets will be sold at Big Sky two weeks prior to prom. Ticket prices will be $15 for a single or $20 for two tickets. It has been a chilly start to spring sports. Our Missoula and other Montana AA teams have canceled various events over the next couple of days due to cold weather. Please check Big Sky Facebook page early and often for updates and rescheduled dates. We would like to welcome Missoula's bone and joint Taylor Percho as our new athletic trainer.
Alright, thanks, Annalise and Paul. I think we've got Owen and Brogan online, so maybe Owen first if we can get the report
Can everybody hear me?
Yep, we can.
Now, we can, yeah.
Alright, I think I'm going to start with our spring sports. Track has been going really well for SSHS so far. Several of our athletes are already pre-qualified for state. It's been a really cold start to our track season, which makes it hard, but a lot of our athletes are performing really well. A lot of the golf meets have gotten canceled, which our golfers are really disappointed about, but so far, they've had a good start to their season, too. The Seeley Swan Leos Club has a big April planned. We plan on doing a lot for the community with help from our Leos Club. We're going to be filling Easter eggs for the annual Easter egg hunt and doing highway cleanup, as well as sweeping the parking lot at the senior center. Our prom was Saturday, and we had a really big turnout this year. The junior class did a really good job of putting it together. Everybody seemed to like the theme, and everybody had a good time. And today, the entire junior class took the ACT. That's all I have for my report.
Thanks, Owen. And next is Brogan from Hellgate.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Alright, Hellgate students had a great spring break and came back ready for lots of action. Spring sports underway. Hellgate's having a strong start to softball, track, tennis, as well as our lacrosse clubs. Hellgate Key Club is running a blood drive with the American Red Cross, used to be an annual event prior to COVID, and this will be held on April 15th in the Hellgate Lower Gym. Hellgate's very own Goodnight Theater Company and the Drama Department had a four-night showing of The Little Mermaid, including a sold-out show on closing night, which was Saturday. Hellgate Hosa recently wrapped up competition and billings. They took their largest group to date and had more awards than ever. Thirteen students came home with a top-three finish, including nine first-place finishes. Our Advanced Problems and Science Team recently took first place in the Division One Large Schools Competition, which is held at the university. They also qualified the most students for the International Science and Engineering Fair, and a few students will be headed to Nationals in the upcoming weeks. One big event for Hellgate students is the return of the coffee cart, which hasn't been in the school since before COVID, and that will be headed by student government one day a week. Hellgate Science classes recently participated in the release of some trout, which were raised in Mr. Murphy's classroom, where students have the opportunity to see the fish grow and then eventually release them. At this year's BPA State Conference, Melina LaPlante ran a successful campaign to earn the honor to be a part of the state officer team. As the state's vice president, she'll travel to Dallas in May to represent Montana, and nine other students placed in the top 10 of the event. Prom Committee is also hard at work, planning and coordinating Hellgate Prom that will be held at the Wilma in May, and this year's theme will be Old Hollywood. And finally, next week will be Earth Week, and student government and SAVE are working together to do Earth Week-related activities, including flower planting, a trash and show, which will involve clothing and accessories made from recycled materials, and a bike walk, bus, and carpool week. That's it.
Alright, thanks, Brogan. Paul, is there anyone else online? Okay, I've got one more written report, and this is from Aubrey from Willard. Good evening, hope you're all doing well. Happy to announce that another 10 members of the Willard family have fulfilled their graduation requirements and will now be embarking on the next chapter of their lives. We will offer them our best wishes and say our heartfelt goodbyes on Friday, April 15th, with the end of the fourth learning block. Then, on Tuesday, April 19th, we'll return for our fifth and final learning block as we enter the final stretch of the school year. April 21st, a group of students will be making the journey to Great Falls to participate in a buffalo hunt. Accompanying them on this endeavor will be students from Great Falls Alternative High School, Paris Gibson. This is a unique opportunity for many of those participating and a great chance to form bonds with people of similar interests. Lastly, on May 6th, Willard will be hosting our prom. A commonality amongst most of the student body is that we've come to the school with hopes that it would be more suitable fit than our previous school. However, with Willard being an alternative school, that typically means there aren't as many dances, which is why this prom is particularly exciting. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. And then, we'd like to go ahead with the announcements from superintendent.
Yes, I've got two announcements this evening. At the last board meeting, I informed the trustees that we have our K8 science materials that are ready for preview in our curriculum and instruction office, and we've got some folks here tonight from curriculum and instruction, so they can kind of tell you where that's at. But it's actually in Building B, the second building behind us here, and those materials are preview for anybody in the community that would like to take a look at those, K through 8. And then, we also last Thursday met with our 912 Science Committee, and they've narrowed their selection down to a couple of different sources. One of them is called Biozone, and the other one is HMH Science. Both of those materials will also be available for public viewing and comments in the curriculum and instruction office. And generally, we encourage folks to come during regular business hours. We have a sign-in sheet, just so we can get an accurate count of how many people have previewed the materials, but we'll have those materials available for the trustees if they'd like to take a look. We anticipate that on April 26th, the next board meeting, we'd be bringing back to you a recommendation for K8 Science, followed shortly thereafter by a recommendation for 912. One other announcement I have, and that is just a special honor that we learned about on Monday, so I wanted the board to hear this as well. She's not here this evening, but she's probably watching online, Sherry Postma. You all know Sherry fairly well. She's presented to the board in a number of different occasions. Sherry is one of the leadership folks, president of the Missoula Classified Employees Organization, an organization that has over 400 members with our district. So, I just wanted to mention a couple of things and then tell you a special award that Sherry received, but I want to tell you why she received it first. So, if you didn't know, Sherry's retiring this year, and she's worked for MCPS for almost 35 years. Twenty-eight of those 35 years, she's served in a leadership position with her classified group, which is just amazing to think about, 28 years as president of that group. And when I talked to one of her colleagues, this is some of the things they said about Sherry. She's fair, she's honest, she's gracious, she's strong, she's kind, and she's patient. I had an opportunity to work with Sherry for about three years in a school, and in my experience with Sherry, I thought she was very professional, always, always maintained a very high level of professionalism. She cared deeply about her job, and more importantly, she cared deeply about kids and her colleagues. What always impressed me with Sherry is that she understood the importance in the school setting that we all had to work together to help kids succeed, and so it's something I learned from Sherry and something that I watched her do every day. So, for all these reasons and many, many other reasons, Sherry was given a state-level award this last weekend. This is an award that has never been given before. It's a brand-new award called the Eric Fever Distinguished Leadership Award, and it is the inaugural time that the award's been given out. There's 20,000 members of this organization across the state, and they chose one person, and that was Sherry to receive this award. I just wanted the board to be aware of it because it's quite a distinction, quite an honor. We all know that Sherry was the first person to receive this award, and just nobody else is more deserving than her. So, I hope Sherry's watching online, and congratulations, Sherry, if you are. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. We have just one item on the consent agenda. It's an elementary acknowledgement of an MCPS student attendance agreement, which is found on page 16 of your packet. We won't discuss that specifically. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Elperson. We have a second, seconded by trustee Hobins. It's been moved and seconded to acknowledge the attached list of elementary students requesting to attend other school districts. All elementary trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. Our next agenda item is under Finance and Operations, it's new business, and we're going to have a presentation regarding the levy and how levy information is being passed to the public, presented by Tyler Christiansen, our communications specialist.
Thank you. I do help the district with communications, and one of the ways that we've been communicating information about the operations levies that are on the May 3rd election ballots. We have emailed staff and student families and included a link to more information on the MCPS district website. We've also made some social media posts and some outreach to news media. We've printed up flyers to distribute to schools, and an example of one of those flyers is included in your board packet on page 17. We are going to be mailing some postcards to other households in Missoula to reach families that are outside of our school communities, and Rob, Russ, Pat, and others have been visiting all of the schools to make short presentations, provide more information about the operations levies, and answer any staff questions. We plan on continuing these outreach efforts and combining them with others through May 3rd.
Thank you, Tyler. Are there any board questions for Tyler? Oh, I see now. Grace, come on, you can do it.
Always. I haven't seen a ton of coverage of the levies in the press, and I was wondering if there are opportunities to talk with folks. There's always folks who have questions. I mean, school finance is so complicated, as we say a lot, and helping people understand, you know, what this levy is and what it isn't, and how this supports the programs that people feel strongly about in the district. I guess I'm just wondering what else we can be doing, what we should be doing, also how the board can be helpful.
Tyler, do you want to answer that?
Sure. We have, well, I've spoken with TV, radio, and print media, and I think that there might be additional media interest as the date of the election draws closer. I think that the elections office is mailing out those ballots this week, and that will also be a good opportunity as well to have a timely exchange of additional information. Those are my ideas. I think there are a few other ways, but we could work with our media partners and post more on social media as well and help spread the word through those channels.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other board questions or comments? Thank you very much for your presentation. Our next agenda item then is the Facility Committee update, and that's an information item led by Burley McWilliams, our Director of Operations and Maintenance.
Just as Burley's getting set up there, just a reminder to the board that we've established this Facility Committee. It includes board members, but it also includes members of the community. There's members from the city and the county. There's community members on the committee. We've really only had one meeting so far, and the first meeting, we discussed the school district properties, and so we thought it would be good for Burley to give you a preview of what the committee saw, and the committee plans to meet monthly here on out, so excited that Pat and Burley got this committee off the ground.
Thank you. We'll start with the first slide. This is kind of overview of the district buildings, so we'll break into two different sections where we have overview of the district buildings, and then we also will talk about the district properties that don't have buildings on them. Start off with the administration building, which we call the Old Admin Building. It's over on Sixth Street. It's our oldest building. Year built was 1896. It housed our administration, superintendent's office, HR for many years until we were able to remodel this building. Thank you. And kind of get everybody under the same roof. Some of the, it's a pretty small parcel. It's not really conducive to a school. It's only 2.9 acres. We stopped using it as a school in 1954, and then we've done some, an addition to it where we have the print shop, which actually, I couldn't find any history on why the print shop. We call it the print shop. It's the big metal building to the south of it. But it housed our buildings and our trades and crafts members up until the mid-'90s when the print, before the print shop moved into it. So, we have what I call a new steam boiler in there. It's still about 25 years old. We actually recycled it from Lowell when we did the demolition at Lowell during our bond projects. It kind of was good timing where the boiler was starting to fail there, and we were able to kind of, we were able to take the boiler from there and move it over for a large savings, really, and it's operating very well. We replaced the roof in a 2011 building reserve, and then- And then some of the reasons we vacated that building is it makes it tougher for a public facility is the ADA. There really isn't a lot of ADA. There is access to, as you look at the front of the building, if you have a little clicker here, I can highlight it for you, I think, Paul. If I click the right button, it would work. So the ADA, if you can see my highlight, that's our quote-unquote ADA access that goes down into a non-code ramp into the basement that has access to a freight elevator that's also not code. So it made it very nice to come into this building from a public event standpoint. We have had, we worked with the county, and they had some grant funds for us. We did a 2001, in 2001, we did an environmental site assessment, did a Phase 1 and 2 where they go in, and they really do a history of the building from an environmental hazard standpoint. You know, was it an oil gas station? Did it have oil tanks underground? That sort of thing. And then it also looked at the assessment of inspecting that facility from, you know, lead-based paints, asbestos, that sort of thing. And they give us, they give us an estimated cost, which you'll see in the last bullet point there, was estimated cost for about $110,000 to do the abatement, to do the abatement project in that building. It's kind of a floor schematic and an aerial of the site. As you see the picture there, the aerial, it's fairly small and isn't really conducive to having any kind of school site on there. Cold Springs currently, Cold Springs is a 1930 building. It's about 51,000 square feet, and it sits on six acres. We've had a lot of additions to the building, as we've had in a lot of our other schools, and we currently lease it to the Missoula Early Learning Children's Center. And then we have Studio M, which is a dance studio, and then a cancer-support Missoula. Kind of highlight the area. So the old school building, which is right in here, that's the original school building that has the Missoula Cancer Center in there. And then the dance studio is in this section, and then the Missoula Learning Center would be in the remaining part of it. Sorry. Currently, the, this is a brick-and-mortar building here, along with the old school, and then this is an old 1960s vintage modular that we purchased from Cold Spring. Mount Jumbo currently is, it's not being used. We actually, from the MCPS, but we have allowed Missoula emergency personnel, emergency responders, first responders utilize the building probably two or three times a month for training. It's been a very good opportunity to keep some activity in a building, keep the heat going, the water going, which is always a plus. It's a really beautiful school. We relocated Lowell Elementary into Mount Jumbo when we rebuilt Lowell, and it was a great fit. There was very little work we had to do to it, but there is some upkeep that we needed to do, or that we need to do. The boiler is original, it's old, HVAC system's old, the roofing system's old, but the inside of the building is just, it's really nice and really good shape. And here's an aerial. It's in East Missoula. Not very good, you know, points of interest to kind of determine where that's at, but just before COVID hit, Rob asked me to kind of look at a light touch and then a potential renovation of what it would cost to have Mount Jumbo upgraded. And remind you that this is 2020 numbers. We've, obviously, there's been some escalation in construction costs over the last couple of years, and these costs don't include any design costs, engineering, you know, none of those soft costs that would be included, owner's rep fees. This is basic construction costs. We didn't do a replacement cost because, or, strike two, because Mount Jumbo is in really, a really nice building, and I don't think that replacement would be an option. We don't want to, we don't want to replace that building. Renovation or a light touch would make a lot of sense. Prescott, a 1951 building. This was built, you know, same era as Jefferson and Washington, all in the early '50s. Most recently, it was, it housed Missoula International Schools. They rented on a month-to-month, and it's currently what I call winterized. We currently don't have any water going to it, all our heat shut off. There really isn't any activity in the building, and it allows me to sleep at night knowing there's no water in that building in the wintertime. So there is, there is a lot of maintenance needs for this facility. The roof is in poor shape, the plumbing's in poor shape, the flooring's in poor shape. We have piping issues. There's a lot of ongoing issues in there, which is likely why, one of the reasons that Missoula International School chose to leave and build their own site. Obviously, it's in a lower rattlesnake, and it's really a really nice site. It's in a, it's tucked in with a bunch of homes and residents, and the residents love this school and love this site as well. We also did some estimating light touch and renovation costs on this, and we did do a replacement cost because it's in not-so-great-a-shape. And again, remind you that 2020 estimated costs with not, no soft costs or contingency involved in that. So, you know, we're seeing, I'm reading where we're seeing elementary schools as, in as much as $20,000, $25,000 right now, or $20 to $25 million for construction. So it's, the prices are probably a little, but this is only a 25,000-square-foot facility, so most of our elementaries in the, are in the 55,000 to 65,000 square feet. So, you know, of course, I'd bring the cost down as well. I don't think you could fit a 50 or 55 or 65,000-square-foot facility on this site. It's probably just not large enough for that. Whittier, if you've ever seen Willard, before we rebuilt Willard, they are the same, same building. 1922 building. It's currently leased month-to-month by Head Start Missoula, and they are great tenants. They keep very good care of this facility, and they love it, and it's tucked away over on the north side, just east of Orange Street, and they're great tenants. They've done some light upgrades to it, basically cosmetic, but they do a really good job keeping care of it. And I believe that lease is $10 a year? Pat?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that wraps up the facilities that we have, and so I'll hit on some of the district properties that we have. Any questions on the facilities before, or do we want to do the whole thing and then ask questions?
Let's ask questions when you're done.
Okay. So the first property we'll go to is, it's at the Egg Center. It's, it's, sorry, it's kind of small on this, but it's out by West Campus at the University of Montana, just down South Avenue from Big Sky, and it kind of, you can kind of find the jagged little edge here, and then it has a big rectangle. It's about 66 acres. The Egg Center currently uses, if you see the road that divides it, they use this half for irrigation and haying, so they usually get a couple cuts out of that every summer. They take the hay and they, they use it for some of the student FFA program for their animals out there, and then they also sell some of it for revenue to help fund their programs. The other side over here is grazing. They also irrigate that. We do have water rights out there for this facility, but they irrigate this year-round, I'm sorry, graze it year-round. And that facility is on a septic system. It's on a well, and it really is, it's a great facility, great program for our students. They also have another parcel that is just east of that. It's kind of on an island, so to speak, between the Fort Missoula Sports Complex. It is, it's right in here, and as if you see, this is Big Sky High School just to the north. And then right here in the center is, it's owned by the US Army, where my red dot's over, and that's a cemetery. So it's kind of an island within an island, so to speak. And they currently utilize, well, if you look at this road, it's, this is Old Guardsman Lane, it's called, that made the connection into the fort. And they typically, they take this area now, and they, and they have water rights over there as well, where they run water lines and they do their summer grazing over there. So they move all their animals over about this time of year, and their lamb and their, and their lambs, their sheep, sheep, and their cattle. And then this section here, when the Fort Missoula project wrapped up, the US Army conveyed this road back to the district, and I think the fort, or the Egg Center folks have some plans for this property over here. I think we'll revisit that with them here soon and find out. Hasn't been used for a whole lot for quite a few years. There's some dead trees on it, and they've used it for a lay-down area for the construction project out there at the Fort Missoula, and even for the Big Sky Project, we use it as a lay-down area. Rattlesnake property. So this is up on Lincoln Hills, or Lincoln Drive. We have this, you can kind of see the divide line here. It's this funky little piece along here, and you can see the kind of divide line. It's actually a different elevation. It's about, there's about a 10-foot elevation difference where you have the Hellgate Soccer Fields here, and then the Hellgate softball teams compete down here as well. This field here is kind of what we're highlighting, this L shape. It's about three to four acres. It's really just bare land. Currently, the district's not using it for really anything. We allow the city to take snow and dump it up there in the wintertime as they remove snow off streets. There really isn't good access to it. They come in off this, this north side, which is through open space. And then you can't really see it in this, but there's actually an open space along this dotted trail line where these neighbors have access to the back of their property through this section. So there's, there's often a lot of conversation during soccer, sometimes for softball with the traffic issues up there. So what you'll see is you have a parking lot down here, and people also park in these two fields on each side of the parking lot, but then we park along the street and on both sides, and it basically takes it down to one-lane traffic. And, you know, we get a lot of conversation about that pretty much every soccer season, especially crosstown games. So, you know, we work with the city pretty well and trying to figure out, you know, solutions. We've talked about making this into some sort of a makeshift parking lot at times, but it just hasn't really gained much traction. 55th and Rimmel. Pat's already offered to sell this to me at below-market price, but this, this is really, really awesome property. And I apologize, not to the greatest of you, but it's this little rectangle here. It is 20 acres. It sits up on Rimmel Road. Oops, apologize for that. Sits up on Rimmel Road. It's flat. And then I put Charlo in there. You can see Charlo right there, just for a reference of how close it is to Chief Charlo. This property here is currently, it's for sale, but I believe there's a buyer that's looking at developing it, and I think it's pretty promising that it's going to happen. So you're going to, I haven't heard or seen any, how many, how many homes will be on it, but I believe it's 110 acres. So it's fairly good size. But this is a vacant lot, and it's just partially fenced, but it really is a neat piece of property. Lynda Vista property. It joins Maryland Park. Right here is Maryland Park, and we have some county property here, and this on the far-left side of the screen is Lynda Vista Drive, or Lynda Vista Boulevard. And when we did our Smart Schools 2020 Plan, we looked at this location for Jeanette Rankin, and it quickly got ruled out, mainly because right here is a residential road, it's Paul Lane. This is pretty much the only access we have to that property. It's five acres, and it's probably at a 3% to 4% grade. It's not real level, and it just doesn't allow good access. You know, when you think about what our elementary schools look like at the end of the day or at the beginning of the day, you know, we have hundreds of cars, buses coming and going. It just didn't make sense to have one access point. So, and this five acres was gifted to the district during the development of all, of the Lynda Vista area, I believe in the '70s or '80s. I don't have an exact date on it. Duncan Drive. I think we are all well-versed in Duncan Drive and the benefit it has to our community. We have a great relationship with the city, who subleases this to Garden City Harvest, and the city actually manages this field park. I think there's a lot of adult soccer leagues and stuff the city uses for this field for. We utilize the P's Farm for a lot of educational uses. We have a lot of field trips to that facility, and it's been a, it's a great benefit to the community. Westside Park, it's attached to Lowell Elementary. It's currently under lease with the city for 40 years, which expires in 2044. They're currently working, or just broke ground, on multimillion-dollar water splash park slash playground upgrade, which is pretty much on this, this half of the parcel. And it's a, it's a great relationship we have with the city and a great, a great tribute to that community. Tool Park, this is kind of a funky one. We call the track area, the football field area, we call that River Bowl in my department, and then up here in the upper field, we call that Tool Park. So you might hear it called either one of those throughout the community. It's kind of a third, almost a third, and another third. So we own the ditch side, is what I call it. There's a, there's actually a ditch here that runs from the Clark Fork, out of the Clark Fork. We own that part, then you have open space in the middle, and then the city owns the north section of it. We have a great relationship with Parks and Rec. We have mutual interest in that field. Hellgate Elementary, Hellgate High School has priority for sports practice and for PE that they use that pretty much daily, weather permitting. And in part of the agreement, the 19, I believe it's 1981 agreement, any upgrades or any kind of work we do to that facility is agreed upon by Parks and Rec and by the school district. So the one thing that I'll note is that the location and part of that agreement is there is not to be any competition down there, so it's only for practice fields. And that sums up our facilities that we currently do not have, or currently not using the properties that we have. Any questions?
Trustee questions? Trustee McDonald?
I was kind of curious about the Cold Springs and the different rentals that we have going on there. What is the revenue that we receive off, like, monthly or annually, and what are we doing with that, that money?
Pat, you want to answer that question?
Vicki, you're talking about the Cold Springs rental?
Yeah.
So we have the Early Learning Center that's in the facility, and currently there, they haven't been paying rent, and so they're in default of the rent, but I believe that that property is going to be reverting back to the district for district use and future use. And there'll probably be a discussion with the board here soon about that. The other property that's being rented, we rented about $350 a square foot. There's a dance studio there, and that's the primary other user, along with the cancer community that's in the old portion of that building. I don't have exact numbers for you, but I can get those to you.
And where, that money that we do?
So those funds are deposited in Fund 15. So when we've collected rental revenues in the past, for instance, for the rental of Mount Jumbo to Walla Walla College, and we rented the Prescott for a number of years to MIS, those funds have been reinvested in facilities over time, most recently in this facility. So that's typically what those funds are used for, and we, we go to the board whenever we're looking to expend those resources.
Great. That's what I was hoping the answer would be.
Thanks. Trustee Gill.
I kind of have the same thing about the Prescott School. On your notes here, it's rented to the Missoula International School, but you mentioned you're happy that the water's off. Are they not using the whole facility, or are we getting revenue from them? What's, if you can kind of expand on that a little bit for me, please?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't hit that very well. They've actually rebuilt, they've built their own facility, and they've moved out. They moved out about two years ago. So we winterized it because they moved out, and there's, there's nobody in it right now. So, yeah, I didn't expand on that. Sorry about that.
Any other trustee questions? All right. Oh, trustee Walker Andrews?
I'm completely naive about buildings and construction, but having heard the students talking about needing space, are any of these facilities at all useful for something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, Mount Jumbo is, is a great facility. It's not necessarily geographically friendly for, but it would be something they could definitely consider. Prescott, I would, I would probably say not so much. I just, I don't have the confidence in, in, I mean, half the system doesn't heat the buildings or half the building can eat. And the gym area is one of those locations, which would probably be a location they'd want to use. So I think there's always, there is an option for Mount Jumbo with that. But I don't know that we would have, you know, administration building. You know, potentially our old print shop could be a good location for that. It's, it's a, it's about 5,000 square feet. I'm not sure what the square footage, I mean, I was listening to them tonight as well. I wasn't sure what that looked like. But I think there could be some, some discussions considering that. Yeah.
Any other questions? Trusty Decker?
Thanks. My question, I'm really glad that this work is happening because I know this board has for a long time been curious to get a better handle on what all of the properties are that are, you know, in use, not in use, what the potentials are for all of them. And I'm curious what the next steps are for this facilities committee and how, how the thinking will kind of move forward about moving from this assessment of what exists toward thinking about options, possibilities, plans. And, and engaging, you know, continuing to engage the board, the community. I'm just curious if we have a sense for what that's all going to look like.
So yeah, so one of my visions and one of the things I asked Burley and Pat to consider early on was what, what we really need is a facilities master plan and a lot of other school districts have those sorts of things. That's not only based on what facilities we have, it's also based on enrollment, demographics, where we see growth, those sorts of things. And, and then that, that committee using that plan would be making recommendations to the board. So for example, if we see tremendous growth in a certain part of town, I won't necessarily say what part, but let's say there's a certain part of town and there's a lot of growth. We don't have a facility in that area, then it would be the facility use committee that would come forward with, with a plan on, on how to accommodate growth in a certain area of town. So. That would be my hope is that we get some sort of master plan. There's again, lots of examples out there that we can use to, to create that. But we've got some of the pieces here and then in the fall, we're going to reengage our demographer who, who told us, you know, not to use these, this year's numbers because they were still a little, little shy of, of what we thought we would be because of COVID. So in fall of 2022, the demographer is going to reengage with our district and try to give us some ideas where that growth is. So. It's not only facilities, but it's also paired with that growth, those growth numbers that'll help the committee make recommendations.
All right. Any other questions? Trusty Mercer?
I guess sort of a comment to that. To me, one thing I envisioned it could do. So like the admin building, it, it can't be used for a school. I mean, I'd like to see that be pushed back on a little bit and then sort of a concrete decision to put to rest. Not what to do with it or what anything, but just have looked at and be like, yes, it's true. This could never be a school. We know that if we think forward, moving forward, what to do with it, we've done the work, they're like that. Or, you know, the one up on the hill. Is that never usable as a school because it's too close to an existing school? We'd never need that. I mean, just to really kind of assess out of the heat of the moment, what these different facilities could ever be used for so that that knowledge is available when something does arise, I guess.
Okay. Trusty Gail?
Pat, I asked you about a month or so ago when we sat down, any work on getting a map together? I'm a little bit more visual person. So having, you know, like a large layout map with everything kind of put together would be kind of nice when we start making some of these decisions.
Yeah, we have a, a couple of those around. So we might need to update them with some of these properties because they're more school based, but we used them when we looked at the boundaries and we used them to a lesser degree with bonds. So yeah, we can try and pull some of those together and get some of the properties and vacant properties added to the mix.
Any other trustee questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Burley. So now we're on to the next new business finance and operations and it's for the Hellgate Welding Shop Dust Collection System. It's a secondary action item and again, Burley is our presenter.
Yeah. So this is a, this was a part of the resolution that you guys looked at for permissive levies. And part of the permissive levy projects that we're proposing for high schools is to, at Hellgate High School, they have a ventilation system in their welding shop that is no longer code. It currently works as it should, but it's not code in today's standards and it really doesn't do a good job and could potentially pull some harm, harm, harmful air within the building as they're welding. So we've developed a plan to kind of get us through this year. We're welding with only a couple of kids at a time instead of the whole class. We're opening up doors. We got some what we call air scrubbers in there that we purchased from our bond projects that move a lot of air with HEPA, HEPA filters. And so we're doing what we can to make it safe for our students currently. And we've, and over the last couple of months, we've had an engineer go in and redesign a new mechanic, a new HVAC system, a new dust collection system is what they're calling it. Very similar to what you'd find in a wood shop with a dust collection system. It's just going to be in the welding shop. So we're estimating that cost to be about $400,000. I kind of break it out a little bit in, into the narrative there. And what we're looking at doing is trying to get this construction going. Or at least the purchase of the materials going now. So that when we're, when it's scheduled to arrive, if we order now, it'd be scheduled to arrive in August. So what we could do is we could work backwards. We could do all the demolition as soon as school gets out and do all the duct, ducting and duct work. And then once the dust collection system itself comes into place in August, we can go ahead and install that and have it ready for school in the fall. We're looking at using building reserve carryover to start funding that project now until we receive those permissive levy funds.
Do we have any questions or Burley? Trusty Mercer?
So in the past, we've seen these little projects kind of eating up the last of the capital bond, for lack of a better word, the, the big schools' bonds. Is that now completely gone?
Yeah, part of our, we're, we're looking into what the budgets are currently now. So what we had is we went through and, and we've just recently, not long ago, started to close out a lot of our retainage in honor of our construction projects. And so we're starting to go back and look and see what we have remaining. At this time, we don't have a, a, a budget at this point in time. But we're, we should have one shortly.
I guess I have a question. So that wasn't, this project wasn't in the bond plan. It wasn't on the ballot. And so therefore it, are we free to use those funds that way? Or do we need to reimburse them back to, to pay off the bonds?
Well, if the bond, if, if, if there was money left in the bonds, we would, I think we'd be able to use them. There's a lot of discussion in the bond language regarding improving HVAC systems.
Okay, thanks. Trusty Gail?
Has there been any investigation into this, into upgrading? And some alternatives versus a full gut of the whole system? Versus, you know, if we have some other options there that, you know, if we could do it for half this cost by doing some upgrades versus an entire retrofit?
Yeah, great question. I ask that question of the engineer every single time we hire one. We did. We looked at a couple of different ideas. You know, a dust collection system just happens to be one. There's actually a air handler units we can use and do, which isn't a lot. It's not cost effective and it's nowhere near as energy efficient either. So we did, we looked at that. And then you'll also look at different ceiling. Air scrubbers, if you will, where we mount them in the ceiling and they, they filter the air and, but those, those from a maintenance standpoint, they're not, they're not maintainable. You're changing filters often and filters are very expensive. We, we spend almost $30,000 a year in filters in our district already. So. This became the most efficient economical solution to the, to the, to the need.
I know when we did the tour out there, they were talking about, you know, the, the dream list of expanding that welding shop, you know, sometime in the future. Is this going to be kind of in, made with that in mind? So a future and, so we're not going to be looking at replacing this and if we do an expansion on that as well, that it's going to be cohesive with an addition?
Yeah, another good question. Yeah, it would be able to be expanded off of, I don't know where they'd expand that welding shop. I think we'd expand the dust collection system.
Okay. Any other trustee questions or comments? Okay. Thank you again, Burley. Oh, we have, this is an action item. So the, the recommendation from the administration is that until the permissive building reserve levy is realized, the administration recommends that trustees grant permission to use the building reserve carryover to fund the ventilation improvement this summer. Do we have a motion from any trustee? Moved by trustee Gail. Do we have a second? Second by trustee Rob, Robbins. Sorry. Any board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Oh, go ahead. Sorry. Go on.
I'm sorry. There's probably questions. The building reserve carryover fund is well above this?
Yes.
Okay. Any other board discussion or questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that passes unanimously. Our next item is under Personnel Negotiations and Policy. It's to approve the personnel report. Again, this is routine. We don't usually discuss it. We don't discuss individuals on the report. Do you want to make a presentation, Mr. Rot?
No, this would be our regular monthly report. There's nothing unusual about it.
Okay. Are there any trustee questions in general? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the? We have two, we have to make two motions. So is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the elementary personnel report? Moved by trustee of Garris, second by trustee Hoppins. Any board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that passes unanimously. Next, the secondary recommendation. The administration recommends trustee approval of this high school personnel report. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Gail, second by trustee of Garris. Any board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? All trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that passes unanimously. Next, under Teaching and Learning, we're going to have a presentation. It's an information item. We'll have a presentation from Mr. Lodge and Ms. Guest regarding the updated state science standards. And there's information in your packet starting on page 56. So if you guys want to go ahead.
While we're getting our presentation up, I'll just introduce myself. It's wonderful to see you all. My name is Elise Guest. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction. And I'm really happy to have two of my members of my department here. Anna Perrier is our K-5 instructional coach who helped to really oversee all of the work around our K-5 science. And then we have BJ Edie, who is our 612 instructional coach, who also then helped to lead the 612 portion. So I asked him to come and join in to talk about how the standards then look from the K-5 and 68 perspective. So you see in the board packet that we added in a little bit of reading. And I highly encourage you to do some quick reading of this. It's a great opportunity to see how the standards really come into play. So. It's a great opportunity to talk about the standards. I think sometimes the, the science standards are really lofty and complex. And so it's a great time to just talk a little bit more about the standards, how they came into fruition, how Montana adopted them, what that means for MCPS and our teachers and our students. And then next time when we come back together, we'll be able to talk to you specifically about the curriculum materials that we recommend that we think are really truly the vehicle for helping us to teach to these standards. So when we talk about NGSS, we're specifically talking about a set of standards that were adopted then in April 2013 by a consortium of states, which Montana was a part of. They're not a part of the common core standards because of the complexity and depth and rigor of the standards. So they rest alone as their own set of standards that were not only developed by that consortium states, but also by our bodies of research and expert, national experts of science. So in that totality, they have a braided system for NGSS and it's a three-part process that then gets interwoven into our standards and our curriculum and our lessons and our assessments. And so the first part is practice. What do students do? That essence of scientific practices in engineering. And I love that the robotics team were here. I feel like they were like the embracing our standards and showing you exactly what it means to learn on these standards and to show how that relates in, in practice. So. The first is practice. The second is a sense of content. What, what do we want our students to know and be able to do with these standards? So that's everything that you see around a sense of that relationship of the science and the engineering and technology all coming together. And then lastly, what we lovingly call the cross cutting principles. And those are how students think, how we show that level of thinking, whether it's through that cause and effect. And it's that application of that thinking across all of our science disciplines. So. You see on the slide deck, there's things like cause and effect and proportion and quantity. And that all then is showed with how our students are thinking. And so the challenges for our teachers is to make sure that hand over heart, we are addressing each of these three elements of NGSS. And that's where the complexity of the standards come into play that are unique and different than the common core. What this looked like then for Montana is the state of Montana and the Office of Public Instruction adopted these standards in September 2016. What I'm really proud to say is that through this adoption process, through those two years, we had MCPS district administrators as well as a wide variety of K-12 teachers on that adoption committee. And so from that wide breadth of information across Montana, we adopted the standards. It is known that Montana did not adopt the engineering component to some of the standards because the impact on our rural communities and how they're going to be able to uphold those standards in, in their context and, and learning state. You will see later when you hear from our fabulous instructional coaches about how MCPS wound up adopting those and bringing them back into our curriculum. Another piece that makes Montana so unique is, is also including our standards around Indian education for all. So through our collaboration with our Native American specialists and our curriculum department, we're able to really connect around how to uphold these standards that make our standards so beautiful and relevant to Montana. So you can see, for example, in one of the seventh grade standards around life science, how the Indian Ed for All standards then are embedded into this learning for our teachers and students. So. In this case, it's not only just taking scientific concepts, but acknowledging about how American Indians were using them to maintain that healthy relationships and including that in our environmental resource. So. You'll notice that the national standards were then adopted by Montana State and then we included the additional Indian Ed for All standards as well. And so from there, I am going to pass it off to Anna Perrier, who's going to talk about how our Montana Science Teachers Association also gave their input into these standards for how then it can look in the classroom. And then we'll go into telling you what that means for MCPS.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. And there is a Montana Science Teacher Association. And as these were being adopted, these standards were being adopted, they did make a position statement supporting these standards and the implementation of NGSS within Montana. From their constituents, they agreed that the three dimensional approach was appropriate for Montana. And the elementary teachers that were involved saw great connections between our common core math and English Language Arts standards. Within MCPS, we have created curriculum documents that show our NGSS standards and how they go with our Ready Gen standards and how many of the units support our NGSS standards. We've created crosswalks for those. We will be continuing to work with Native American Student Services to embed that learning within our science standards. And then as we continue to delve into our math curriculum, looking at connections with our math standards and curriculum to support our NGSS.
So when we start looking at how these standards then became MCPS's standards, as Dr. Guest said, teachers and district leaders participated in the OPI process. They were in full support. in full support of implementing the adoption at the same time the state was adopting. And the one big difference we did here in Missoula is we incorporated the engineering standards as well, whereas the state decided to hold off on them. And we incorporated them because we had already using Project Lead the Way throughout our K-12 curriculum, which instructs in many of those engineering standards as well. Once we get MCPS adopting them, we then start to look at developing our curricular materials in the curriculum around those standards. The first thing we do is we prioritize standards. So we look at the standards and we pick which ones we as a district feel are the most important ones for us to make sure that we assess our students formally in. If you look at the NGSS standards, they are expansive, intense, and very rigorous. And so in order to ensure that we're giving enough due and getting deep enough, we prioritize the standards. So we focus in on those important ones that the teachers especially feel are very important. From there, we create proficiency scales, which is basically just ways that we can show that students have learned the standards we are instructing. And we do those proficiency scales on a standards based scale of one to four. One being totally off base, two nearing proficient, three proficient, and four advanced. And we give examples then of what some work samples could look like that would show those levels of proficiency. We then get together as district-wide PLCs. So we take teachers, all the teachers from sixth grade, we come together, we sit down, and we start talking about lesson design and modeling of lessons. And that's, allows us to ensure that students at Washington getting the same things student at Porter, same things as a student at Meadow Hill. Once we get to that, we then look at our review process for our curricular materials. And Anna?
And much of that work was done pre-COVID. There were teachers together in cohorts working on the curriculum development, the beginning processes, and then everything was kind of paused over COVID. And this year, we were able to reboot that in a blended learning situation where we created Google classrooms for our K-5 and then for our 68 to develop some knowledge around science instruction. And so one of the, the reading that is in your board packet is one of the readings that the teachers all read that were, chose to be on the committee. And they felt it was very impactful in their understanding of what NGSS is and what we're looking for. And so that was part of that knowledge building with that. And then we consulted ed reports as, as we were able to, which is an independent review process of curriculum materials meeting standards that we've used in the past for our ELA and our math adoptions. We then came together as a K-5, using the readings that we did and created a vision statement for K-5. And then in 68, they did the same. And then we created a K-8 vision statement that you will see very shortly of what we envision our students learning and doing in the science classroom. And we will come to you on the 26th with our recommendations of the curriculum that support our vision statement and teaching of the NGSS.
And so through that vision statement process, we started out with a team or each individual writing a vision statement of what they would like to see science look like in our classrooms. We then got in groups, further refined it, and then we, as Anna said, created grade band vision statements. And then we got together and combined those two. And not surprisingly, it didn't take that much work to combine them because there's a few words different here and a few words different there. But for the most part, our teachers were very on the same page with what their vision of science education in Missoula would look like. And as you can see, it says, "At MCPS, we believe through inquiry-based science, students will see themselves as scientists who innovate, solve problems creatively and critically, and collaborate and communicate effectively."
And I'd like to take this moment to just appreciate the work and the amount of participation across our district for, in getting us to this space of being able to look at those robust standards, as you saw, and bringing them into a tangible, manageable way into the classroom. And we know this year has been really challenging and people are exhausted and the level of commitment from our educators to come together to do this work, identify two phenomenal materials that I really believe will be the vehicle to help support this vision statement in our classroom is really remarkable and should be noted. So with that, that is our insights into NGSS. Hopefully that helps give a little bit more tangible connection to the standards as then when we come back and look at the materials. As Dr. Watson said, the materials are up for review and I acknowledge Hesse Olperson for already coming and looking at them and asking us lots of questions. They are in our professional learning lab, the space where we hold our professional learning for MCPS. We have not only the digital platforms available on computers where you just click a button and it all pops up and you can look at it from a teacher's point of view or student's point of view, but also all of the printed materials. So you know exactly what, what our money is buying for this adoption cycle for the next five years. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and happy to support any additional interests as you see fit.
Do you have any questions for Dr. Guest? Trustee Walker Andrews?
Oh yeah, I went through these and they're very interesting. And I must say, I was very impressed with what students are supposed to be able to do at some point. But I did have one question because we're, we're approving or will approve science standards sort of separately from the math standards. I guess I'm wondering what you see or don't see in terms of a fit between what students can do mathematically when they're trying to look at a model or statistical analysis or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the, the hope is for us to not have learning happen in isolation, but to really show that transdisciplinary approach as, as in life. And so part of our conversations with the curriculum material partners is to talk about where those natural fits occur and how we can bring, like, for example, our math and our science teachers together and talk about the unit that occurs in science and how then that can be, that learning can be enhanced and supported back in the math classroom. So part of our work in my department is to find those crosswalks and to make sure they're really explicit and thoughtfully aligned. And then getting teachers together for that district PLC time to do that work. So for example, when I think about some of the work that's already been done in K-5, we've spent a lot of time with all of our K-5 teachers talking about, here's our ELA Ready Gen materials and here's where our science standards are already embedded in the standards. So we're already hitting those standards in multiple ways throughout a student's learning career. So that's part of it. I think a second component to the, all of this is then with our recommendation is a significant nod to our community partnerships where we have a lot of fabulous nonprofit organizations in town who are helping us to also teach to the standards. So I can think immediately about our Clark Fork, our partnership with the Clark Fork, oh my God, CFWAP. Clark Fork, thank you. I just call them CFWAP all the time. With that, they do a big Osprey unit in grade seven. And we can talk about the data collection that happens in math and where we see that in our Carnegie math curriculum. And then we can talk about where those science standards are and how we bring everyone together with our, our curriculum partnerships. And it's this big, beautiful, authentic, you know, powerful learning experience for our Missoula students. I was a little wordy, but did I help answer the question? Or do you guys have anything more you'd want to add?
I would just say as far as the rigor goes, just to highlight that when they did write the NGSS standards, they did match that, that complexity and rigor and difficulty per grade level with the common core math standards so that the students wouldn't be asked to do these high level models without having that matched at the same grade level difficulty in the common core math standards.
Any other questions? Trustee Decker?
Hi. Thanks for all of this. And, and thanks also for taking such a deep dive into the K-8 piece. I think science in K-8 is sometimes not as like under the spotlight because we focus so much on ELA and on math and on those really sort of fundamentals. But the science, of course, is where it's super engaging and K-8 teachers have to do a little bit of everything, right? That they're not as specialized as high school teachers. And so to do this work and really dig into the science curriculum, which is one of the many pieces of the K-8 teacher's job is a big deal. So I wanted to clarify one thing and then I have a question also. So the clarification is that we're not actually like approving or evaluating the standards right now. We're, we're talking about adopting new curriculum materials to meet the standards that have already been well established. And this is all here for our like review and kind of getting up to speed on what we're going to take a look at. So just making sure that people understand that that's true. Like we're not actually opening this box of stuff. Then the other piece that I wanted to ask about is professional development. And when there's a new, new curriculum, a new set of curriculum materials, and I don't even want to use the word materials because we've had that conversation a lot. I want to use the word textbooks. So we want to talk about, you know, curriculum that we're adopting this set of curriculum. What professional development do we anticipate that teachers are going to need to be able to kind of make that shift? And how is that going to, you know, be fitted into what teachers are expected to be doing over the next like year plus?
Those are two great questions. So first and foremost, MCPS adopted the standards back in 2015. Nothing else has happened on the national forefront. NGSS is still NGSS. Nothing's changed. Those are all set. As, I, I appreciate the, the question around professional learning. I would hate to ever have something plopped in a classroom and said, go forth. We are firmly committed to professional learning and the support of our teachers. And second to that, we believe that our teachers coming together in a collaborative manner can bring their expertise and together we have a collective efficacy around how to best support the learning in the classroom. When it comes to professional learning and supporting the adoption of a new curriculum textbook, we start with making sure that we have a lined out initial implementation for all. So we have literally been spending hours and hours and days identifying which teacher in which classroom needs which training and then setting forth a calendar. We know that there's a lot of challenges around sub shortages and the concern around taking our teachers out of the classroom during the day. And so what we've done the last few years for the ELA and math adoptions is start actually in the summer. For those who want to volunteer their summertime, they will get compensation per the collective bargaining agreement, but they can actually then begin to dig into the materials ahead of time. And I'm very type A. I would be one of those teachers that'd want to dig in right away. And then there's others with other things happening in the summer that that might not be an option. But we try to provide a wide variety of dates throughout the summer and opportunities for people to access a professional learning as they can. So we have days already identified on our professional learning calendar that's open to the public that shows that we have three days in June, three days in July, three days in August. But then also we have time in September for then the after school learning for those that aren't able to do anything in the summer and it best fits with their families and whatnot for then the time in September. But beyond that initial training, I think what's most important is we do believe in instructional coaching where we will work side by side with teachers to make sure to honor their expertise and to elevate our practice as a whole. And so we identify rounds, learning walks and coaching rounds throughout the year where we will come together and do some instructional coaching and learn with our teachers. And sometimes that involves our curriculum partners where they'll come and bring in their experts and talk to us about what this could look like in the classroom and how we're doing. It also can be rounds with principals where principals and site-based leaders can go into classrooms and also look at what kind of learning we should be looking for and promoting and supporting. So it kind of happens at a wide variety of levels, but I think what's most important is that it's job embedded so that we can make tweaks and improvements for our practice all the time and that it's ongoing. It's not a one and done where we leave people without that support. Lastly, much of this professional learning is continued through our PLCs. And so that's where we believe is where the magic happens is through that collaboration and taking all of this learning together and putting that into practice as a collective whole. So would you guys add anything more? Yeah?
Also, we are in the midst of developing a professional learning platform where teachers are able to choose their learning and how they want to do that. So we intend to, we already have one ready for science that teachers can begin to work on at their own pace, as well as putting together the learning that we did with our small group, working towards our adoption process. A lot of that reading, those teachers said, our, our colleagues need to read this. So we will be sharing that through that platform so that they have access through that as a self-directed professional learning model.
And that professional learning platform is on our curriculum instruction webpage as well. And it offers more opportunity for some self-paced professional learning. We all recognize that we learn at different paces and at different moments in our time. And so Anna is speaking to a wonderful new platform we've launched this year to try to promote professional learning in a time when it can be so challenging to be removed from the classroom and sub shortages and things like that. We have some modules on there around acceleration, around equity, and some of our other curriculum materials with math and ELA. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay, thanks. Actually, I have a question. It's rather specific. In high school, do we have, I understand it, three math standard, or three science standards is physical science, life science, and earth and space science. But in fact, only two years of science are required, which means they get, they don't get physical science unless they take chemistry and physics is the way I understand. So my question is, what percent of our kids are actually taking chemistry and physics in addition to biology and earth science?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'll defer to Russ. I will say one thing. That does begin in sixth and seventh and eighth grade and then they circle back around to it up in high school. So it's a spiraled approach to the NGSS.
I, I don't know the exact number. In the high school side, in the, in this curriculum cycle, we're looking at biology and earth and space because those are the two required. So that's what resources are being evaluated probably here in another couple of weeks that Dr. Watson mentioned with biozones and HMH. But the percentage of kids, I mean, it wouldn't be hard for me to find out. I can certainly do that. Chemistry and physics, I can get that number for you.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions? Trustee Olperson?
I have a comment. Is that okay? I just wanted to thank Dr. Guest and your team for helping me when I was visiting the CNI. And I really would like to encourage other trustees to stop in and view what they have there, including the community. This is your time to see what's there. And it's, you can spend a couple of hours in there if you wanted to. But your team was really helpful when I was there. So thank you.
Okay. Any other trustee comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Guest.
Thank you for your time. We'll see you in two weeks.
And I believe that's our final agenda item. And so we are adjourned. Thank you.